All right, it is 6:01 and I'd like to call the regular board meeting for Exfil Executive Village Schools.
Carrier.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lazer.
Here.
Better.
And a welcome to any visitors who may be here, Carrie, Alosa, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director of Operations, before Eric.
Yes, well, it's been a very, very good winter in my eyes. Haven't had a lot of snow removal. Hopefully it's over. Mowing season's right around the corner, too. All the equipment's ready. It's been serviced and ready for the spring, summer. I'll have on next month's agenda, the mowing personnel. And now that it's springtime and the rain season's gonna be here, too, the looming issue of roof issues is soon to be here also. I had a walk-through today with two individuals with Carlisle Cintec. They're the company that actually manufactures the rubber membrane material that we've had a lot of issues with. They walked through the whole thing. We've also been in contact with Peterson Construction. I got an email from them today. Their plan is in one month here in April, they want to probe the entire roof, check every seam, everything, and they guarantee we're gonna have the roof that we thought we were gonna have when we moved in the building. So they want us to be patient, give them a little bit of time yet now that it's warmed up and they can actually start doing some of the work on it. I had 41 areas last year before cotton and roofing came on, and they got it down to 28 right now. I changed all the ceiling tiles in October 2015, and currently I have 28 areas in the building that have stained ceiling tiles, so.
Now, are they gonna, I think they paid for them last December. Are they gonna pay for these, too?
No, I'm sure they will.
Good. Now, do we also charge them labor for that, too?
No, never.
Okay, I didn't know that was something that was possible.
It was a headache.
Oh, yeah, especially when you got a cut around.
Yeah, so I told them, I said, "They're never in a full-size tile room. You just take one eye bone in, it's in a corner. You gotta cut it to length, the angle. You gotta take a sprinkler line out. There's a lot of stuff involved with some of them." But they plan on doing everything in April, and hopefully they have it all fixed before summertime. I told them, last board meeting I attended, that we're on board of moving ahead with a third party if need be to hire, so we can get a full building analysis done and do the destructive phase where they actually open up parts of the building and find out why we're having the leak. Also in the process of lining up electric rates and lock-and-man contracts for that. Starting, our contract's actually good until June 2017, but now the prices are down on electrical per kilowatt. Now's the time to try to line up for the future. They'll give us a three-year startup starting on June 1st, 2017. So I've been working on that, waiting for some more prices, and Homer's kinda been in the loop on all that. Also, been trying to do a program through AEP. It's a retro commissioning project through PlugSmart, the one, and I kinda talked to you guys about it. The one thing that we had to guarantee was that anything that they found up to $5,000, since our building's 150,000 square foot or less, that we would pay for the upgrades. They had less than one and a half year payback. I just got off the phone with them today. Hopefully I have a report for next month. They haven't been able to find anything, so our building's pretty efficient. They found minimal stuff, but not enough that they can actually even run the program. So they said they're gonna have a report for that, they're gonna come on board and show what they did find and a few things that we can improve to save a little bit, but it's nothing like that they thought they were gonna find, so. Which is good, I mean, since we haven't been wasting money for seven years. Also, we had the fire marshal came back and did his reinspection, and we passed. Everything's completed on that. Spring break's right around the corner. Have a lot of preventative maintenance work getting done, contractors being here for all the heat pumps, changing filters, extra custodial cleaning schedules and work being done, landscaping on the property, courtyard, mulching and items like that. And also the last three months of the building are usually March and May are the two busiest months of the year for building use, I guess, all the programs, music programs, athletic programs, banquets and stuff like that, graduations. So we've been pretty busy. Seems like we have two to three events almost every day for the last three weeks, and it's looking like that for the next few weeks also. So it's been a real busy month. So, any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Joe.
All right, the middle school, high school report. Back on February 8th, I want to congratulate all our science fair competitors. I know we had many of them represent districts, represent pixel of district, state. Of course, we also have someone that's gonna be going to nationals, Kate Murphy out in, I believe, Phoenix, Arizona. I know there's a long list of all their names on the board agenda, so I'm not gonna try to cover all of those, but great job to all the students. Of course, a big thank you to all our community volunteers that participated at the event. On February 10th, of course, we had our two-hour teacher in service. That was pretty much led by the ESC, General Officer Nancy Mills. They did a real nice job. We talked a little about data, talked a little about the test truck strategies for the end-of-course assessments coming up in April and in May. February 11th, AP Tools students took a field trip to the General Motors Boundary Plant in Defiance. We had been working on scheduling the last month and a half, Jeff Schaefer and I, and all the preliminary scheduling to make it complete by our students. And now we're working on the number of sections that we need, and here in the next month, we'll start actually creating the schedule and start plugging into students where they need to be. It becomes a giant puzzle, and it's actually somewhat fun. February 17th, sophomores completed a career assessment with Fort County Career Center, of course, in their preparation for attending Fort County next school year. Many of our students are receiving letters in the mail, letting them know if they've been accepted into their program of their choice at Fort County, so good luck with all of those letters. February 18th, the eighth-grade students attended Fort County Career Exploration Day. Gives them opportunity to visit different areas of Fort County, different programs, kinda start to get them, you know, thinking about whether or not they want to attend over the next couple of years. Also on February 18th, Senator Cliff Height spoke to Mr. Dave Blue's government class. If you've never met Senator Cliff Height, he's actually a pretty entertaining guy, so he always has plenty of stories to tell. On March 4th, Mrs. Leone's sophomore's competing in the second round of the innovative interviews. Great job to all of our sophomores. I know that she selected, I believe, 10 from this group, the previous group, I believe there was 10 or 15 selected, and then we will start on a second round here in another month to try to crown a champion. Great job to our sophomores again, and of course, thank you to all our community volunteers who came in and participated with the interview process. On March 5th, it's a Saturday, our junior high Ann Varsey Cheer Squad competed in GMC cheer competition. Junior high took home first place, and of course, Varsey took home first place. They did a great job. Also on March 5th, we had our junior high coordination and dance, and again, seniors are always entertaining at the coordination, which is hosted at the Uber, and they enjoyed a dance here at the school in the convent, so great job on Saturday night. On March 7th, I want to thank everyone who attended the Hicksville School Foundation event, and our Crystal Apple Award winners were recognized at that event also. Of course, you know, we had some entertainment when it came to the donkey basketball, which was a blast, and I hope we can do that again soon. And then, of course, I want to recognize our support staff, Crystal Apple Award winner, Mr. Eric Bassett, our elementary school teacher, of course, Mr. Chris Gate, and then our middle school, high school teacher that was awarded through Crystal Apple, is Mrs. Marilyn Flee, so congratulations to all of them. Also on March 7th, Mrs. Kobe, she was at the Franklin B. Walter Award Ceremony in Archbold. Zach Best is recognized for his academic successes, and Arlena Fleming was nominated as Zach's honor teacher, so they had a nice event dinner over there. On March 8th, our juniors attended the Northwest State College Fair. Many of the local universities and colleges attend that, so it's a great opportunity for them to get an idea of what's on the horizon. On March 8th also, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony. There were 22 new members inducted into the National Honor Society, along with, I believe, our 36 previous members, so it's quite a large group, a great group of young people, and congratulations to them and their families. Future events, AP Tool has started the process of selecting new students for their program next year. They hosted an event, or excuse me, they came to Hicksville yesterday, and they did a video and spoke to the students to see what type of interest they would have. And then from that point on, we'll start doing the application process, interview process, and of course, preparing for next school year. The senior trip to New York City is from March 15th through the 19th, and of course, we have many parents that have volunteered to attend that and staff members. It's always a good time. So again, I wish all our seniors the best, and I hope they enjoy their trip. And then, of course, I'm gonna bring up College Credit Plus. The letter of intent to participate for all our students is due April 1st. That's just saying, hey, pretty much, I'd like to participate. Doesn't mean you have to, but you're showing interest again. And then from that point on, we provide information, and of course, parents, call us, contact us. We'll try to function the right direction. But a lot of that College Credit Plus information and process is on the parent and the student. They need to contact the university of their choice, and most universities have a website. It's pretty easy to walk through. I had a group of three families in today that I sat down with, and we kinda talked about the letter of intent to participate, and then we talked about what they need to do, so I could've walked them through Bulling Creek State University's website. It's real easy. Just follow the directions, get through it. But it's still, it's a heavy task for families because, you know, it's not known. So again, call us, we need assistance.
Thank you, Jeff. Travis.
Thanks. I don't have a ton, but some upcoming things. Well, first of all, last week, I attended the ESC with a group of teachers, one of them's great in kindergarten, first, second, third. A session put on the ESC regarding the K-3 literacy grade on the report card. Did pick up some new information that I wasn't aware of, that really no one was, to be honest. There was a lot of schools there from the Fort County area. But also kind of solidified some things that we already had looked at as some issues and some things we could do to improve that score. And again, I'll say, I still strongly believe, as do the teachers that were there, that we're doing the right thing constructionally. Just maybe some statistical issues were in that point. So that was really good. Appreciate the ESC putting that on. They was doing a nice job. Some upcoming items on the elementary side. Next Friday, the 18th, we're gonna take our sixth graders down to the Presbyterian Church, and we do what we call an etiquette dinner. This is part of our Hicksville shake preparation, kinda teaching how to use the different utensils and that, and that, in your lap, things like that. So Mr. Bassett has volunteered to go buses down there, and we'll be cooking. I think we start the day before, and then we go down that day and finish up the dinner. It's always a nice day.
Date's that, Travis?
What's that?
What date's that?
That's the 18th, and you're not gonna be available.
It's gonna Wednesday, Thursday?
It's Friday.
Okay.
That's why I got Mr. Bassett.
Thank you.
Did I explain? Okay. Speaking of the 18th, that is the end of the third quarter already, so great, or come on, spring break. Speaking of spring break, of course, we're off beginning of the 21st. We will resume school on the 28th. State mandated tests. Speaking of grade card items, we will begin on the elementary side on April 11th. And we won't test every grade level steady every day, but we will be finished May 5th. So we try to test on Mondays. We try to put a day or two in between grade levels, taking assessments in different content areas, so you don't burn the kids out. So April 11th through May 5th, we will be doing some testing off and on, state mandated tests. Kindergarten registration, our newest Aces will be here April 11th and 12th, and we are filling up our spots. We've got a healthy class coming this year. So parents can still schedule appointments by calling the elementary office. We'll get you set up. We'll always make more room for more students. So we always look forward to meeting those kindergarten kids and their parents as well. And then we have two-hour late teacher in-service approaching on Wednesday, April 13th. Not gonna talk about.
And I would say, Travis, that probably that kindergarten registration number is probably about 20 higher than it typically is at this time of the year. So unless the parents are on the ball this year and actually called and made an appointment, or we usually have 15 to 20 that come at the last minute, so it'll be interesting to see what we actually have.
We may need a little more time to get them all assessed and registered, actually. We're a little, I mean, we're pulling the gills right now, but that's all right. We'll take them.
Yeah, that's right.
That's all I've got.
Denny is not, thanks Travis, Denny's not here tonight, so will we have a Fort County, if you pass it on to him? Okay. All right, so we will just ask him for that at the next board meeting, and so superintendent's report.
Yeah, I had, wanted to talk a little bit about the report card. I kinda wrote something out here. It might be easier if I just read it, because, so I'm gonna do that. First off, the report card, as we all know, is hard to explain, is hard to understand. Couple of things to talk about is, right off the top, is that across the state, there are numerous appeals from districts, all in regards typically to the value-added growth letter grade that is given to schools. Years ago, there was the proficiency test. I'm sure you're familiar with that, Minda. And schools across the state, they eventually learned how to master that, mastered that test. Then they, so they switched it up to the OAAs, and we played that game for several years and learned how to master that test. The state actually made the comment that there were too many schools without some ratings, if you remember, back in the, a few years ago. So they went to what was called the next generation, the PARC testing, which is what we did last year. So in one year, the PARC testing is already thrown out after one attempt, and now they're moving to what's called the air testing. I don't know how they think all this stuff up down there, but they do. So we, as a district, we can't dig deeper into our data and look to see how we received the scores that we did until April. That, a lot of that data's not available for us until April. We do know that there's some concerns with our district and how some of our data was reported, and we've already talked about how to correct that for next year. A good example would be, we know we have some students in the elementary building that are being served and gifted, but it wasn't reported that they're being served and gifted. We don't know how that slipped by.
Or at least it's not, it's not shown on the data that we've got.
Right, right.
And it's that way at the middle school, high school level, too, because we were informed this year by our ESC rep, Renee Long, that, you know, like, for example, every kid that's participating in College Credit Plus, we're providing them the opportunity to take college classes. So that's, you know, it's like a written education plan. Well, the problem is, yeah, we're servicing them, but you don't get credit unless you do, again, as I say, you know, the bureaucracy of things. We have to fill out paperwork, additional paperwork stating we're providing services, even though we are providing services, and it's already documented. So we're providing documentation on top of documentation that was never done before. And the same thing with accelerated students on our end of the building. Any student that's a seventh grader taking pre-algebra, or an eighth grader taking algebra, or a student that's advanced in English classes, or anything, we have to write a WAP, even though we're already sending an E-MS that they're accelerated. Now we can present the documentation that tells them that, oh, by the way, E-MS is documented to get credit for. I mean, it's just one of the things that we have errors on, I guess.
So I think we've missed some steps in our, in our reporting that's caused some of this. I think some, another factor to keep in mind is that before it was online, students with disabilities, and keep in mind that we have about a 20% population of students on IEPs, if they have a reading disability, we were able to read to them, because obviously they have a reading disability. On the online system, you can't do that. So that had a major effect on the score that we had. And then I wanted to provide you with some interesting data that I have been reading from different people that have collected data. Reported some data, and they put it together. So one of them was that 428 schools reported in regards to the recent test scores. Eighty-nine of those districts used the paper method of PARC testing, and 85% of those districts received an A on their value-added scores. 260 of those districts utilized the online method like we did, and 62% of those districts received an F. Only three districts went from an F to an A, while 80 districts went from an A to an F in one year.
How many?
Eighty. So that's just of the ones that reported. My comments for Hicksville at this point are that we, for years, have consistently been rated excellent or excellent with distinction, year after year after year. We have basically the same students that we've had for the last several years, and we have the same teachers that we've had. And both of those groups, both the teachers and the students, are working hard every day, just like we always have. So I find it hard to believe that we can go from an A to an F in one year, when we're basically have the same group of people that we've had in the past. So clearly, in my mind, there's a reporting issue that's taken place that's affected our grade. We are not an F school. I would, I do not stand behind that F at all. We are not an F school. Guys, do you have anything to add other than what I said? We know there's some issues in the reporting, and we feel that that's where the mix-up is, but the quality of work that we're doing now is not an F compared to the quality of work that we were doing last year. There's no way.
The information you guys provided, we don't get almost that set of recommendations.
No, no, no. It's a, it's a big rough gets across the state.
Now, is there any way to?
There are a lot of appeals going.
That's what I was gonna ask. Can we appeal and submit some of the stuff that we didn't, or we didn't realize?
It's not gonna change the scores that we're getting unless we do like Indiana, where they're talking about possibly just throwing them out altogether, which is what they should do.
Yeah, I said in Indiana, every, they switched to this new testing, too, like what we did, and every district in the entire state went that. And so they're, they have, I mean, they're talking about the whole state, many districts are just getting together saying, "We're not even recognizing any of this information." So they're kinda starting all over.
Here's an example. I've got some data here. So last year, our kids in IEPs, 63.4% of them were proficient in, let's just say, reading, okay? We dropped 19.5% this year to just over 43% of them in proficient reading. A 20% drop in performance. I attribute that to the accommodations within the past. We can get reading answers, questions and answer choices to that. We could read it up every IEP we get here.
And they could read the passage to us out loud, which we tested all of them. We always do every year, one-on-one, because we know that that is the benefit for them.
So this year, instead of any of these supports, and there's a reason there aren't, that they have reading problems in their IEP. So this year, they just took a bit of the test in a smaller setting and things, but they had none of those supports. They were completely on their own. And a few of the shares were prepared by, that had to factor into that drop in achievement. And it was, you know, math, we, math didn't drop as much, but there was drops there to intercept, so. Not to make excuses, but it was almost like, it was like a trifecta of things this year that hit us on once, so. But we'll figure it out.
Is there a benefit in joining the appeal process? I mean, if more, I mean, you know, for a southern state of like Indiana, if we all appeal?
You know, Jen, I don't know. I know there's a lot of squawking, and everybody's submitted and done surveys. I mean, I did another survey today about it, and replied to this, replied to that. I do all those things in regards to the recent scores. So we'll see. I mean, at this point, they haven't come out and said anything yet. Clearly, I mean, if 428 schools out of 600 and some are squawking because the scores have been that drastic of a change, something's not right in how they did it, or how they formulated the scores. Any questions about that that I might not be able to answer? No? Okay, and then the only other thing I had on my report that I wanted to report to you is make sure you see the musical this year. April 1st, 2nd, 7th or 9th at 7:30. It's a Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Saturday. There are no Sunday performances. As we stand by our decision that Sunday is Family Day, so no Sunday performances. And it's gonna be fabulous, because I came out of retirement to help out, because Mr. Chamberlain needed a little break. I somehow had to make it better than Phantom, so I have contracted with a company from Kentucky that's gonna come up and train our kids, and we're actually gonna be flying some of our students during this production. So it's pretty awesome. The costumes are all handmade by local people, and it's pretty over the top, so I'm really proud of it. So please come see us. Bring friends that get reserved seating, because they're costing $4 more than the regular. Thank you. And I will say, too, in regard to that, that I have had a lot of donations from people in the community, businesses and stuff in the community that wanted to advertise in our program, that's helped out with the additional expense, because it is a big, it was a big expense to do, to do that, and people don't realize what it costs to put on a show. And this is a new one, it is just released, so just getting permission to do it sent me back $2,300, just to get permission. And, you know, that, along with all the other things Pete knows what I'm talking about, the amount of money that it costs to put a show on. And we don't do, we have high expectations around here, you know. So, yeah, it's gonna be nice. Thank you.
I do want to explain that we are going to be going into executive session, and there will be action, and we will vote on that at the end of the consent agenda. But before the consent agenda, we are going to briefly, for five to 10 minutes, go into executive session for matter number four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining session with public employees concerning their compensation or other items in condition of their employment. So may I have the motion to go into the session?
Amen.
A second?
One second.
Thank you, Jen. Time in is at 6:27, and we will just, oh, we do need roll call first, sorry.
Carrier.
Yes.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lazer.
Yes.
And Better is absent. Motion to have support, and we are just gonna go across the hall, so we will be back in shortly.
Jeff, Travis.
6:41. Please note that we are going to move to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have an addendum to other business, and that probably should be marked 6A rather than 8A. We'll go right at the end of the consent agenda before discussion, that we will cover that. All right? So, do I have a, first of all, any items that need to be removed? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right.
Carrier.
Yes.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lazer.
Yes.
Motion. And we have our minutes and financials. Do I have a motion? In a second?
I'll second.
Forward.
Well, first of all, we have the minutes from the regular board meeting of February, held on February 8th. Reviewed those. I don't think we've, didn't notice anything on those. We have the cash reconciliation, financial statements, and then the amended certificate estimated rev, the approved changes to the amended certificate of estimated resources, and permanent appropriations as presented. I did email those to you. I apologize for those not being included. Minda, did that get in your packet or not? It did? Steph, I think that's your. As far as the month went, February's typically a quiet fiscal month for school districts, so we don't have any extra payments going on. We did see our state aid. We got our, we're starting to get paid under FY16 enrollment figures. Matt's, we're working through a couple of small things there, but we all and all think it's, it's fairly close. Numbers-wise, some of the adjustments they're making with the state numbers, though, has our funding trending down a little bit. I'm hesitant to make any large assumptions there, though, until we, they'll do, the next payment we receive, which will be a week from Friday, is supposed to have the, our last adjustments from last school year. And if you remember me talking earlier, the adjust, the second time they adjusted those numbers really hurt us, because they were missing a large chunk of students for us. So we're gonna wind up getting a good chunk, I believe, back next week. Typically, they make those in one lump sum payments, but from what I've been told out of Columbus, the number you're seeing, which is that on 21, that all of their financing uses, which is 5.03 on page 21, which is a big number, 10,804.
which is 5.03 on page 21, which is a big number, 10,804. They're gonna keep deducting that the rest of the year, which I think is gonna further confuse things because that is the deduction that they have in place for that, that reduction that they show for their number two look. So they're gonna make it fairly complicated on us, I think, to track the records and make sure, but, but I'll take care of it and we'll have, we'll have all the records and all the notes we need to have and make sure we're, we're keeping our projections right where we need to, so. But I wanna wait and see where this final comes through. So at this point, I said I'm pretty excited about that. Then it's gonna get wrapped up and we'll have real final data to deal with. I always like dealing with final data. You can make a lot better assumptions when that's in place. I will also tell you it's not in here, but we did receive our state, our last, our property tax settlement payment last, excuse me, on Monday. And I will have some information on that at next month's meeting. It is a little bit higher. We've talked a little bit about how the property values across the district were increased again, but I'll have better data on that next month. Were there questions about the financial statements or reconciliation first before I talk briefly about the changes? You notice on the changes, I did go ahead and implement the adjustments I needed to for the taxes, for the tax payment we received on Monday, which was part of the reason you did not get this in the packets. I wanted to take advantage and get that out of the way. So that's a majority of things related to the general fund, the bond, permanent improvement fund and, and the maintenance fund. That's where a majority of those revenue changes are coming from. The rest of the revenue changes, which does add up, add net out to a total negative number, are related to other trends and things, money we really have already in place for the most part, the revenue we have received already. On the expense side, it did go up. Student activities, it seems like that's really a hard number to always get, get a really good feel on and I think we are always making, I'm always making adjustments on that through the year. It's basically about them giving the money to where the kids, to the kids in those, that are involved in those programs or the class groups, you know, the senior trip, it never fails, no matter how close I try to estimate it, I'm always low with the senior class. Somehow the, the cost of the trip and the participation always seems to be higher than what I estimate when I'm putting that number together at the beginning of the year. So that's a chunk of that piece. So if you notice though, it was a $24,000 roughly increase on the general fund and that was, was a lot of spots here and there and I wouldn't be surprised if when we get to the end of the year, I'm reducing it by a similar amount. But I think right now it was prudent to make that adjustment, so. I know it's a lot of numbers and I do always try to give this color coded so it's easy to see the reductions and the increases and separate those two, so. I know this is, first you've gotten a real good chance to look at it, but are there any questions on those items? If not, we'll get to our donations. Again, always thankful and we've got some pretty figured donations this month. We have $50 from Greg and Diane Collins to the academic team, $100 from Hicksville Pharmacy and Home Medical for the academic team, and $500 for Elite Water Source for the academic team. We also, I know we've collected more money since. That is the money to go towards their trip to Chicago for the, for the national meet. So we're always appreciative that people will step up and support those programs. The next item, Hicksville Schools accepts four Diamond Memberships, a front-site training institute donated by Dr. Robert Ramos in January of 2016. These memberships are to be used at superintendent's discretion for the purpose of training individuals who are volunteering to be armed at Hicksville Schools. We would deeply like to thank Dr. Ramos for providing these memberships. If you go out and do any investigation on their website, these, there's, there is a significant cost to these memberships. And we really, and the training is right in line, I think, with what, what Keith expects for our people that, that are gonna be armed in the building to be able to handle situations that could come up. Hopefully never do, but we prepare, pray for situations in the hopes that they never happen.
There was a school shooting here in Ohio, but last week, was it Butler County?
Yeah.
No, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Middletown. Yeah, there was, what, I don't think anybody died, but I think four kids were shot. I mean, it's just scary world. I think, I think we made a wonderful decision.
Yep. I actually am gonna be attending a board meeting in another district next week. They want me to come over and speak to them about that process and how we did that, so it's worth knowing. And the last item on the treasurer's report on page three, we want to approve the transfer of $11,952 from the athletic fund for the fall fundraiser card sales to the following funds. $8,912 to the football program, $512 to cross-country, $576 to golf, and $1,952 to volleyball. That will, that will, wraps everything up from the fall fundraiser card sale. It took a little bit of time to get everything squared away and double-check our numbers. So that's why that football fund has been running negative. If you looked at that, once I get this transfer put in the system, that'll, that'll go away and those balances will be appropriate, so. But I think, you know, they were trying to see whether they could maximize the fundraising a little bit more coordinated. I'll be a little surprised to see them do it next year, I guess, at that, at least to that level. So, but that will clean that particular piece up. Any questions at all? Roll call. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
All right. Passes four zero. And we'll move into employment certified staff. May I have a motion to?
I'll move.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Minden. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2015-2016 school year. A.J. Plousing, junior high track coach, and Ryan Meiser as mini-aces baseball coach. To recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2016-2017 school year. Nikki Balsman as head volleyball coach, David Cleland as head cross-country coach, Jeff Haught as head golf coach, and Lucas Smith as head football coach. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Passes four zero. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Jen. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Minden. To recommend issuing a three-year contract to Travis Leesty, elementary school principal commencing August 1st, 2016, and ending July 31st, 2019. Any discussion?
Is there any other options?
I know, guy.
No, we're glad to have you for three more. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You are doing a very good job.
Thanks, I love you.
And bye. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Absolutely.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four zero.
He didn't say no when we talked about it.
Okay, a motion to go on?
Ten.
Please, ten. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig. To recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2015-2016 school year. Stephanie Mazer as co-prom advisor. I've been with this class since they started, so yeah. I think that was based on the discussion. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
I'm seeing, motion passes three zero one extended.
Barely.
No, I squeaked by there. Darn, I wouldn't have been able to stay up late at Friday and Saturday. Saturday and Sunday. All right. The employment classifieds document, the next section here, our motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
And a second. To recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2015-2016 school year. Lisa Friend as co-prom advisor. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Services and agreements, moving on. May I have a motion? All right. Thank you, Jen. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. To recommend to approve an internet service agreement with NBC Nwaka. The Northern Buckeye Education Council will provide unbundled internet access to Hicksville exempted village schools beginning July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019. This service includes basic conduit internet access with 10 gigabyte ethernet, ethernet, sorry, bandwidth and transport. The cost for the service is as follows. For the 2016-2017 school year, it's $27,202.16. For 2017 to 2018, it is $28,018.22. And for the 2018-2019 school year, estimated is $28,858.77. Nice round numbers there.
Yeah. Those are, yeah, those are very consistent numbers with what we pay for internet service. And I will also say that the 10 gigabyte access for Nwaka districts is, it's gonna become the new common number, but we're ahead of the curve on this. The districts, the surface area south of us is still running one. And when you start talking about the amount of video and everything else, especially in this district that comes through, that, that access is very important to how things are handled educationally here, so.
Any other commentary? Roll call, please, on the...
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Other business?
I'll move.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll second.
Thank you, Minden. To recommend to approve the school calendar for the 2016-2017 school year, which was in your packets. To recommend to extend recognition to science fair advisor Kathy Laney, faculty members and a host of volunteers for their work and dedication to the students in preparation for the science fair. To recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to several high school students for their superior award ratings at the science fair held on February 8th in 2016. And there were several students who did a very good job at this. To recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to Kate Murphy, who will advance to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix, Arizona in May. Also, recognition to Angela Betts and Micah Schrader for qualifying for super judging. To recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the following high school students for their superior award ratings at the regional science fair held at Archbold on February 26, 2016. Caroline Barth, Angela Betts, Joshua Fine, Kate McKinnney, Kate Murphy and Micah Schrader. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the following high school students for their superior award ratings at the district science fair held at Toledo on March 5th, 2016. Ian Dury, Dana Metz, Kate Murphy and Micah Schrader. Any discussion or comments? Hold on.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. And finally, we get to our addendum to the other business. A motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Jen. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Minden. To recommend to approve the negotiated agreement with the Hicksville Education Association effective July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2019. Discussion or commentary?
I'd just like to say that the process that we went through a week ago in negotiations could not have been better to the group that was there. It was perfect to work with and it was a very positive, perfect thing.
Yeah, I would say that one never knows what it's gonna get when they go into negotiations, so it's always nice when things come out smoothly. All right. Hold on.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes four to happy. We have discussion. One item for discussion is the school van purchase, Mr. French.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that that thing is just about ready to go in the heat. It's in bad shape. We wanna keep, try to keep it going here. We get to the summer, but I wanted to touch base with you. We also have the marine tours out there that we don't drive anymore. So what I'm looking to do is talk to Schmitz, see if that type of van is even available anymore because you have to have a van that's built for the base of, for eight. You can't have a, like a 12-passenger van and only put seven kids in it. That doesn't work. It has to be a van that is built with the frame for an eight-passenger van with seven students in it and one driver is the maximum that you can have. So not sure those are even available.
I think they are, but I don't know about those specific numbers, but...
I wanna see what you thought about touching base with Jim out of Schmitz and see if, keep his eyes open for something possibly used to maybe get that replaced. Ideally, I'd like to wait till summer, but I, I think that's gonna be, Ayden, they're gonna have to look for it. So if it came available, I just wanna hear your thoughts on that.
How, what year is the one we have? I guess, what goes bad on it? Is it age or miles that goes bad?
It's got 100, it's over 150,000 miles.
Oh, wow, I would never look that.
It's, it's, and the interior, the body is getting, body's getting very worn down.
The door doesn't... The hinges on the doors.
The interior, it's, it's definitely lived a very, a very good life for the district. And it is, it is definitely on the inside that.
Yeah, I see it's time to get rid of it.
We do have it built in the budget. It is in the forecast for next year. If we were, if we didn't, based on the discussions and the availability, if we needed to move that up, we could make an adjustment on that relatively easily and it wouldn't be an item that would have a drastic effect on anything with projections.
So you talked about creating both of them and is that your thought?
Yeah, yeah. Get rid of that Taurus that's sitting out there and the van for something else.
Two questions. One great number for Jim, is that something that we have to bid out or is that under the...
Bidding threshold. It's part of, if we go used, we would probably be under bidding threshold. But obviously, if we would find out that we worked, we would then work through the processes necessary to take that out. Ideally, I think if, if we find something used, bidding threshold is probably $5,000, which the board, board approval is 15. So we're still gonna have to come to the board on approval on that, but the bidding threshold is higher. I wouldn't entertain going anywhere with Schmitz either.
I wouldn't either. I'd rather buy here.
Absolutely. I just wanna act sure.
Well, yeah, but by law, I would, we have to make sure that, you know, depending on that.
And if all things are relatively close and equal, we're allowed to make those, the board and the district are allowed to make those decisions. We didn't have a CAFT, though. Well, the CAFT was significantly lower, though.
So what is, or what's Plan B if, if any person, body, whatever, means is not available?
I don't have a Plan B yet.
Okay. I just want to...
Bondo.
We'll worry about that. First, I just wanted to see if you guys are okay if I talk to Jim and see what kinda options are out there first and then if that's, if those options are available, then he can start looking, you know, maybe at an option or something, to something nice that's used, something like that, and go from there. So just looking for permission to talk to Jim first.
I think that we are in agreement with that.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this issue?
I have a different issue, if that's okay. I just wanna bring up, have we heard anything on, on the surveying of the land over there at elementary?
No.
I didn't know if that's something we can land fire.
We have, wow. I can tell you that I did have some communication with the gentleman that did the original survey. He's like, oh, and this has probably been, this has been several months ago. And he was like, oh, you would, you would want that. And he said, I can put that together. And then I haven't heard another thing from him. I would be to the point right now where I would contact him one more time, see if he can get it put together in short order and say, listen, we would need it by, put a hard deadline on it. If he can't meet it, we'll find somebody else that can come in. I know a handful of people that, that do that kind of work on the side that we could get, and they're all, have all the necessary licensures and everything else that would, that they would need for approval that we can get them over here and get that done, so we do need it. We need that survey.
That building project funding setup, so we put the $3 million in, can we add to that anytime we want? I mean, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, the property, you sell it, let the community know this is what we did with it, we put it in that fund. I don't know, just a thought. I mean.
Certainly could. You certainly could. Wouldn't we, as we go through the process, you could clearly state that, we could clearly state that, or we could move the money after we receive any other one. That's, that's, that's an easy process.
Anything else?
Anybody? Eric, do you have anything that you would like to say?
I don't have a good speech.
No? All right.
Go Bucks.
Yeah.
So, before, we are going to be moving into executive session shortly with no action taken, but I would like to go ahead and let you know when our next meeting will be. Okay. So, April, how much should I get this to?
April 11th.
Okay, Monday, April 11th. Looking to do a calls.
And that would be the regular date for the month, too?
Yes. All right. So, our next meeting will be Monday, April 11th at 6:15. And so, we are gonna go into executive session. I need a motion to reset.
I'll move. We go into that.
Jen? Stan?
I have one. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We got a question for her.